I will now call to order a special meeting of council on Wednesday, February 17th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. I will, I note that all members of council are in attendance this evening at this meeting. I will turn to the agenda. I note that I just asked Deputy Mayor Henderson approach today about having a closed session. We already have one scheduled. I'm assuming that Deputy Mayor could do, is yours an additional issue for the closed session?
I assume, sorry, your worship. And mine would literally be only about five minutes. I just wanted to give counsel.
No, no problem. I just, we are scheduled to be in the closed session in any event. So, you know, we will be able to deal with that matter as well at the same time. So we, I don't think we need to adjust the agenda. The disposal of conflict of interest of any matter before us this evening.
Your, your worship, you still need to approve the agenda.
Sorry, Mr. Nopper. Look for a motion to approve the agenda. Thank you, Counselor Drew, and a seconder.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Counselor Akadji.
That was Counselor Bishop.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Akadji, and thank you, Counselor Bishop. All in favor approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Disposal of conflict of interest and any matter. Hearing none, we'll move ahead. We will move right to the introduction, consideration, and passing of bylaws and motions. And we'll go to PEB 200901, Bylaw 21-01, Short Term Rentals Council Workshop. The purpose of this is for staff to present updated information to council on where we're at with any changes in that bylaw based on our experience with public consultation last week. Nopper, are you to do this, or Mr. Spear going to take the?
Chris, if you want, I'll take the reins to start. Yep, so thank you, your worship. So council was privy and host to a public consultation session on the short-term rental bylaw on February 8th. We, we received well over 35 letters and council has been provided all copies of all letters that have come in from then since then and up to today. So they are well aware of all the comments that are from the public. Staff created a report that summarized basically the, the main key questions that kept reoccurring throughout the process. And you'll see that there. And basically what we're asking within the process now is council direction on how you wish to move forward with this bylaw. We've, staff have had a number of discussions with the planners, looking at ways for inspections and, and processes. But I think the critical thing is if we can go through the staff report and, and get some of these questions answered and we can provide some clarification back to the public. I think it will help answer some questions. Are you worship, are you good to proceed?
Yes.
Thank you, worship. Your worship, you've got Counselor Drew.
Counselor Drew.
Thank you, your worship. In response to a lot of the questions that were, I guess, tabled at our last meeting. I had developed a new shorter abbreviated version of the short-term rental bylaw that was based on the existing bylaw in Nashville, Tennessee. I think it addresses many of the issues that were in this, that are in the staff report. And it might give council the starting, I sent this to council. And it might give council a starting point to consider, how do we proceed from here? So I just wanted to raise that issue as, as we talk about this item a bit further.
Hey, mister, yeah, thank you, Counselor Drew. And again, I think we will have a bit of a discussion of this after we hear from Mr. Nopper further. And then please feel free to input some of that information that you circulated to us.
Thank you, your worship.
So your worship, I'll start with the, the first page of the staff reports. I guess the, the real question comes down is what is, what is the main purpose of this bylaw and why is it being developed? And that was a question that council heard multiple times, both in the letters and through the presentations. So there were discussions on and asking with rental properties that are not tourist homes. So rental properties that are not tourist homes under the zoning bylaw, Z1804, are technically non-conforming. So they're actually illegal under the zoning bylaw. So currently, short-term rental properties are, are really not supposed to be operating under the current zoning bylaw. The development of the new draft zoning bylaw, Z2101, is actually giving provisions and allowances for these short-term rentals to be allowed to operate within, well, within reason within the community. So that's why, that's the main purpose of why this is being put forward is we have an abundant number of short-term rentals that are operating non-conformant to the zoning bylaw. This is going to bring them into conformance or into conformity with the bylaw. So originally, the, the purpose of the, the short-term bylaw was also to ensure adequate safety regulations and, and across the board. So town staff would, in order for us to be able to do a proper inspection and do the safety requirements and in discussions with the fire marshal's office, a fire prevention officer would have to be designated within the town as well as go for training. You're talking anywhere up to four months plus for training to go through this process. Like larger hotel rooms or hotels and accommodators, the fire marshal's office has regulations that do specify inspections, but it's usually for places that have 10, 12 rooms or above. Most of our accommodators, short-term rentals do not have that, so they don't qualify for a fire marshal's inspection. But if we intend to create a level of safety in these inspections, we'll have to have somebody inspect them. We do also have a couple of other mechanisms to help regulate as well as the noise bylaw. So if there are issues with noise within the community, we, we can't address it under the noise bylaw. Additionally, and that was for mechanisms for providing a quiet neighborhood. As well as we were looking at, how could this bylaw create or limit the negative impacts on long-term rentals? And that was, in really looking at this, it's not necessarily the tool that should be used to limit negative impacts. However, there still should be some regulation or process in place to protect long-term rentals as well as the renters within the process. So staff are looking for direction on this and what is the true intent of this bylaw? So council, is the true intent of this bylaw?
Sorry, your worship, sorry, Paul, can you, sorry, your worship, just Counselor Harrison has his hand up. So I didn't know if we were going to allow questions in the middle of the presentation or wait till the end.
I think we should wait till the end, but I'll, I'll allow that question, Counselor Harrison.
Hey, I, I get to sneak in under the wire here. I guess one question with the ensuring safety and, or it's kind of a two-parter is, do we know even approximately how much, how many man-hours that would be in terms of, or like, is that a whole new position we're hiring for there? How much is that? And have we, do we have an opinion from either legal or an insurance company, something saying, what is the liability? Like, like what is the level of, that we need to be at to not get sued for not having, you know, made these short-term rentals to actually be safe? Because they're like, the, you know, that could be a huge cost to the town if we get sued because, because someone's house burns down that they're renting. So it, it, it might be wiser just to back out of the safety game and, and leave it to the levels of government that usually do it, like the fire marshal.
Here, here.
Christie, wanted to try?
Your worship, or do you like me to wait for the, into the presentation?
Sorry?
Sorry, would you like me to add your Counselor Harrison's inquiry or wait till the end of the presentation?
Let's wait till the end of the presentation.
Thank you. And I will mute myself, so I cannot interrupt anymore.
So thank you, your worship. I'll, I'll continue here. So staff are really needing direction as to what is the true intent of this bylaw. We do have two bylaws, the Tourism Accommodation Levy, which does register short-term rentals to have to remit to us. So we are gathering that information and we are knowledgeable of what short-term rentals are within the community. As well as we do have Bylaw 1103, which is about a code respecting standards for maintenance and occupancy of residential buildings and premises. So this could be used again as a, as a standard baseline for short-term rentals if we're having issues with this bylaw. If safety is a concern to council, are, are we comfortable with sending staff for fire prevention officer training and inspections? Note that the training will take time, so just to give you an idea with that. The second question that really came across is what is the timeline for implementation? And this was a, this was a key one. So we had multiple requests within that. The Tourism Accommodation Levy wasn't acted last April, but gave a five-month leeway for people to become registered. So something for council to consider is within this process, if you do enact the bylaw, it, it should be noted that it's going to take some time with COVID and everybody else to, to get inspected and get up to get basically registered or permitted. And again, it's going to take a little bit of time for staff to be trained. So that's another aspect to consider. Does council wish to keep a permit limit on properties? I believe council heard from the public pretty loudly that, that this would be detrimental and allow and, and prevent people from being able to run their short-term rentals and letting the free market essentially justify what can be handled. Another option that council can look at, if you're trying to limit the number of permits that are being issued to one particular owner, you could look at limiting it to a, a two-permit system or council can look at different options if they have different availability. So like a bed and breakfast, a short-term rental and other could have different levels of permitting. So just to keep that in mind. What properties are excluded or included in the bylaw? So right now, hotels, motels, inns and breakfast, bed and breakfasts are currently exempt. We had questions about the campground, tourist homes like Salty Towers might not fit the definitions. So we'll need to look at a little bit more, but the main part would say hotels, motels, and inns are not, they're not with under, would be excluded from the short-term rental bylaw at this point. So on rules and regulations in regards to the safety liability, the safety liability is pretty standard. This is within fire prevention aspects for, for many of, for all hotels and motels to look at. Fire extinguishers, smoke detectors, and all of those from the fire marshal's office. If we wish to proceed with going with the fire prevention officer aspect, then that person would be responsible for checking and inspecting those to that. Another question and comment that came up was the $2,000 of insurance. I did speak with a couple of insurance companies on that and they, they say at minimum, a million-dollar liability is, is sufficient. However, they do have to, on their rider, they do have to list that they have a short-term rental or rental property on site on their insurance rider. So that can be modified from 2 million to 1 million within that process. And just, just within the permitting process. So this, this is where it gets a little more complicated. So in speaking with the planners on going through the inspection, the application process would follow a similar style where the town would receive an application. We would review and send a request to the, our, our planners to do a zoning review and to see if they're in compliance or non-compliance under the Community Planning Act. If they are compliant within the zoning bylaw, then we would be, receive a letter saying they are and that we could proceed with the, the safety inspection and then the issuing of a permit if all is good with the safety. If, if they are non-conforming to the zoning bylaw, then it has to go down to another path where a development permit would be needed. So a permit would only look at issues regarding zoning, uses, setbacks, ETC, and Xander, you can jump in if you need, if I'm missing anything here. If there is, from the development permit standpoint, if there is a need for a building inspection, if they're doing an extension or renovation to the property, then a code inspection could happen, which would cover both building and fire code aspects. If everything comes back fine with that, once approved, then we could issue out a permit. So it is, it is quite an interesting system that we would have to go through if we're going down this road. We talk about main uses in buildings and what secondary uses are. You can just review that within that process. The planners also suggest short-term rentals would have to go through the permit process, so we've got covered that. The next question is, is council willing to allow grandfathering of a tourist home in the new short-term rental bylaw? Now, under the new zoning bylaw, tourist home is being removed. And appreciate Xander, if you can jump in on this aspect?
Sure. So grandfathering is not a simple concept. And I'll do my best to make it as simple as possible. So the first thing folks need to understand is there's different provincial legislature that enables different kinds of municipal bylaws. So the zoning bylaw, municipal plan bylaw, the secondary plan, your subdivision bylaw, they're all under the Provincial Community Planning Act. And the Community Planning Act has a provision in it which says, if you have a use that a zoning bylaw makes no longer allowed use in that zone, so for example, we are removing tourist homes completely. If somebody has a tourist home and, and we can confirm, confirm that it was a conforming tourist home in the zoning bylaw, then that use can continue, the use can't expand. Although there are some mechanisms in the Community Planning Act that deal with things like any destruction of the property. If that happens, how, how can be rebuilt? But the main point is the Community Planning Act, which enables the zoning bylaw, has, it specifically deals with grandfathering. So we don't have to say anything about legally non-conforming grandfathering in the zoning bylaw because the Community Planning Act takes care of it for the zoning bylaw. Now, the short-term rental bylaw is, gets its authority from the Local Governance Act, which is a total different piece of provincial legislature. And that has no mechanisms for grandfathering or legally non-conforming in it. So any, anything that's going to be grandfathered in the short-term rental bylaw, it has to be explicitly written into it. And you could have a situation where something is legally non-conforming in the zoning bylaw. And so technically, the use can happen as per the zoning bylaw. But if it's specifically grandfathered in the short-term rental bylaw, then you wouldn't be able to get a permit under the short-term rental bylaw. And effectively, the, the use can't happen because all town bylaws are applicable. You, you can't, if one says you can't do something, then even if another one says you can, then you still can't. So it, it's, it's quite complicated. Basically, two different provincial legislatures operate in two different ways. Two different municipal bylaws deal with the same thing in, in slightly different ways.
Perfect, thank you, Xander. So council, the next, thank you for the clarifications, Xander. The next question council has to deal with is, does council wish to create a committee with the short-term rental property owners to review the, and provide feedback? If council is intent on completing the bylaw by the end of your term, it's, at this point, that's going to help slow down the process. And it would be difficult to accomplish this bylaw by the time your mandate is complete. What fee structure does council wish to apply to permits? So a development permit through the, the service commission starts at $50. Does council want to limit the number of permits that one owner can have? And does council want to see a fee structure where there's a double, triple, or quadruple of the rates depending on the number of properties owned? So your first permit's 150, for example, your second permit for another property would be 300, your third permit would be 600. So keep that in mind. Does council wish to eliminate the parking restrictions regarding short-term rentals? The zoning bylaw, both Z1804 and our new draft zoning bylaws, Z2101, are pretty specific when it comes to what the necessary needs are for parking. And we will note that even under the new building at 131 Water Street, they had to conform to the zoning bylaw when it came to parking restrictions and, and requirements. So please keep that in mind for any of the comments that were about the, the issues with limiting parking. They, they do still have to meet the zoning requirements. How many numbers of short-term rentals are primary residents and secondary residents? So we were doing a little bit of investigation into that and basically have identified that about 10 to 12 properties are more secondary residents. The majority of them are primary. But a deeper dive into that to identify exactly who's who would need to be completed. But at this point, I don't think we need to go into that level of detail. Does council wish to continue with the penalty fine structure in place? We already heard it from both council and the public that a, a review of the fines should be looked at. Under Counselor Drew's proposed option, $250 fine would be the maximum starting, but then looking at it as a, a loss of permit for a month or up to a year of, of a loss of permit if further issues come down. Now, staff have provided a, a few recommendations when it comes to the bylaw. But again, it's going to, these could change or be modified based on what council feels. So again, removing the negative impacts on long-term rentals, have a statement which states that all applicable bylaws, both federal or laws, federal, provincial, and municipal need to be followed. Do not put a limit on the number of permits, but look at another structure potentially when it comes to the fees. Remove the, the need for seeing the insurance documentation. But at least know that they have it. Maintain the parking requirements. We'll move the estate residential under the proper zoning section. And we will not request short-term rentals provide guest information. We don't do that with the Tourism Accommodation Levy, so it's highly impossible we don't look at that. And under clarification points, how many short, number of short-term rentals are, are primary and how many are secondary? So to date, 24 accommodations, accommodators are in the community, hotels, motels, and inns, there's 10, bed and breakfasts, five, resorts, campgrounds, another three. Short-term rentals, there were 55, and one that converted from a short-term to a long-term. And so this is where the breakdown came into primary owners. So out of the short, out of last year's Tal, so the Tourism Accommodation Levy registrations, we issued 50 licenses, nine to hotels, motels, and inns, four to bed and breakfasts, resorts and campgrounds, another two, and short-term rentals made up the primary portion of it of 35, with primary owners indicated at 25 and run by others at 10. So what studies have been done in relation to short-term rentals affect on long-term? So we do have the housing, the housing study done by the Service Commission that has identified the need for more long-term housing. We have seen the Tourism Accommodation Levy research where we did see 55 short-term rental operators beyond our hotels, motels, and other accommodators. So they are, there is a number of them within the community. But there, I would suggest there is further data analysis that could be collected down the line to see how it is affecting long and short-term. In the concept of unless you hire a lawyer, it's tough to get your suggestions heard. To the public, council has received every suggestion that has been issued to council, either through letter or through verbal. They've also received all of that typed up in minutes and writing. So every portion of the public's input has been reviewed by staff and council. Are there types of provisions in the some zones that allow the short-term rentals to occur? Basically, most, it comes down to your primary or your main use and your secondary uses within the zones. And it could be highlight editors, zoning bylaws, Z1804 or 2101. But there are currently no provisions in this, in that zoning bylaw to, basically in zoning bylaws, Z1804, that would allow short-term rentals. So right now, currently, they are non-conforming to the zoning bylaw. So by adding it into the, to the new zoning bylaw, you're giving them, you're giving the community options. And just some additional action items and suggestions that came from the public is the development of a, of a long-term housing strategy to partner with groups like MBCC and other developers and to create a committee of long-term housing strategy. So to look at developing and creating a, a committee to look at long-term housing as a strategy. So council, I will put it back to CEO Spear or Mr. Gopin, if they have any further comment, feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Nopper. I will go back just to, we don't forget it. Let's go back to Mr. Spear to comment on the fire protection issue that came up earlier.
Thank you, worship. In regards to Counselor Harrison's couple of three questions, it has gone to the insurance company for a first perusal and they're okay with it. But it goes back to that, if we're going to legislate it, then we have to have the people in place to continuously monitor it, which comes back to the question, just because you legislate it doesn't, because you can legislate it doesn't necessarily mean you should. So when council looks at any bylaw, you should be really examining the core reason why you're doing it. As far as man-hours, we estimated between 50 and 60 man-hours a year as part of the total initial inspections. That's if we go fairly heavy on fire code and building code. But as we've said, we actually don't have the expertise in place to, to do that. It's not available man-hours. It's, it's that we have to have additional training that in discussions with the fire marshal's office, you have to actually be trained fire prevention officer. And that takes a little bit of time. So we wouldn't have to hire anybody, but we, it may make more sense to talk to the RSC about doing that component when they have people on staff already. But if council decides to go down this road and have your regulations, then we'll have that discussion with them if that's the way they want to go. And I guess that's about all that you asked, Counselor Harrison, wasn't it? Just something I'd like to bring up to your worship is there is a difference between safety standards and quality standards. And I'm not exactly sure, the, the town doesn't usually get into a quality standards issue that, you know, the same as rating the hotels and things. So we have to be careful on that, that there was some talk very early on that we were trying to do that and concerns. And I don't think that was ever the case. But it's really not up to council, at least at this point, to go through and try to rate, you know, or ensure that not only do they meet minimum standards in the National Building Code and Fire Code, but also that they meet something, quality standard according to our town, that there's various professional associations that can do that or through the review services of the short-term rental sites like Airbnb and VRBO that'll take care of that for us. Thank you, worship.
Thank you, Mr. Spear. Council, I'll open it to questions from council and I'll, I'll start with Counselor Drew. Counselor Drew, perhaps you want to weigh in with what you brought up earlier about the Nashville approach that's been taken.
Thank you, your worship. I, I think I'll preface my remarks by saying, I, I think what I've been hearing from the public is they want something that is simple, easy to follow, and doesn't require a lawyer to figure out how to follow it. And I drafted a short-term bylaw that I, short-term rental bylaw that I circulated to council that was essentially about four pages long. And it takes more of a proactive approach. And, and what I mean by that with regards to, for example, regulation, what it states is that the short-term rental property shall meet all applicable requirements of provincial laws, municipal bylaws, and fire safety codes, period. But we don't need to specify, you need this many fire extinguishers, this many smoke detectors and all that stuff. You just simply abide by the fire safety codes. Other things is that you, you simply, what I, I think we could probably regulate this through a permit system where a short-term rental property owner can obtain a permit in a simple fashion. We have certain rules they have to follow and they, they obtain a permit at a reasonable rate. And then if there's any failure to abide by the rules, I've outlined in this bylaw that there's very simple penalties. If you operate well with a permit, there's a penalty for that. If you fail, a failure to follow the regulations, the first offense is a warning, the second offense is a $250 fine. If there's a third offense, you're starting to talk about a suspension of the, of your permit. And if there's additional offenses after three, it's a revocation of your permit. And then there's a complaint process that's very easy to follow that gives the, the short-term rental bylaw operators and the public due process so that they can have a, a means of resolving issues. And that the short-term rental property owner And that the short-term rental property owner can appeal to council if they feel like they've been unfairly treated. So again, it's very clear-cut, very simple. And it's something that I think we could probably implement very quickly and resolve a lot of the issues that we've heard from the public. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gru. Counsel, any other comments for other councillors, please?
Yeah, your worship. So I guess after Mr. Nopper went through that, there's, there's quite a bit that we're not going to be able to wrap up unless we go item by item and discuss it. But overall, I, I know that we're, we're talking about how the zoning bylaw right now, we need, we need to have a short-term accommodation bylaw in order for them to be compliant with their zoning bylaw, which technically today they're not. But I think a lot of people have taken exception to the fact that short-term rentals are, are to them being blamed for the long-term rental problem in the town of St Andrews. So I guess where that whole theory came from, just to be clear, actually didn't, as far as I'm aware, didn't come from anyone on council. As part of the municipal plan process, there was a number of engagement sessions, some of which were at the ballroom of the WC O'Neil Arena. And one of the flip charts that housing and a number of people did say, I sat in two different groups on that one. A number of people did say that short-term rental growth is a concern in this community. So that's when the first time it, it kind of came across my desk as a councillor. And from there, there was a municipal plan committee that actually put together with the planners, the municipal plan. And they actually, in that municipal plan, flagged it as a concern. So that's where that kind of whole line came from. For myself, I, and I think for multiple councillors here, this isn't, to be honest, something that we wanted to even get into in the last three or four months of our term. But we were told that in order to pass our zoning bylaw, it gives reference to a short-term rent, accommodation bylaw. In order to pass it, we needed one in place. So all of a sudden, here we are, having to pass it. And then from there, what we had is we had a version of this bylaw. And we were told in order to release it to the public, we had to do first reading in order to have a hearing of objection. So the public could actually view it because we don't release documents to the public unless it's gone through first reading. So that's where it is today. But it's important to note that I know, and I think a number of other members of council and staff know that short-term rentals are not the reason why we have a long-term rental problem in the town of St Andrews. Is it a variable to look at? Absolutely. But to say that it's the sole reason, that's not true. There's a lot of factors that are, that are contributing to that. Big one would be double taxation, large increase in appraisal value in the town of Sanders. And even yes, our milk rate increasing has made long-term rentals at an affordable price not as attractive to do. And the reality is, is people are not making that investment in our community. Other factors are the New Brunswick Community College, although there has been people over the years that have been working there. Or it's finding a housing strategy for them. The reality is, is we have learned that the New Brunswick Community College has no desire to manage or build accommodations in the town of St Andrews. So if you have a facility like that, that has the capacity for that many students, you've got to think that they have got to be an active participant in that, in that, in that solution. So a little bit has to do with that. And then of course, a lot of us are aware of the Ogonkun Resort, I'm just telling you how it is tonight. The Ogonkun Resort used to have two more dormitories in the town of St Andrews and those weren't being kept up. And the reality is, is those are both closed. Those two factors alone have put a lot more stress on short-term rental or sort of long-term rentals in this community than short-term rentals have. So for us to say that there, that's the reason, that, that's not correct at all. When I look kind of before this bylaw, I guess my, the two groups that I was concerned about is the homeowner in St Andrews that is having a hard time making ends meet with the tax rate and the appraisal value going up. And they turn to Airbnb to help subsidize their income. I'm very reluctant to pass a bylaw that penalizes them, especially for the fact over the five years of being on council. I don't require, recall a single complaint that was ever came across council to be aware of. The other thing is there's a number of people in our community who have summer homes. And those people that have summer homes are extremely vital to our community. They're our friends, they're our family, there's a reason why our economy flourishes so much in the summer. They are part of the foundation of who we are. And with the double taxation, again, in order to justify such an investment in our community, they have to find a way to make that property, when they're not using it, make sense for their family. So those two specific users are people that I don't want to see get penalized. But the reality is, is the way that this bylaw is worded right now, it would penalize them. So I think counsel and staff could agree that the version that's before us today is not the version that third reading will be. So I think that's the first thing. I do like councillor Gru's suggestion, but I guess what I'm hearing and I, as far as the safety that was put in there. If we can't do safety, we have to pass this bylaw, then we have to find a way to remove it as much as possible. Maybe it's councillor Gru's recommendation where this town of St Andrews isn't liable either, if there is some liability to councillor Harrison's point. But my message would be simplify. We do need to keep track of how many short-term rentals that we have. And I think the reality is between COVID and of course, the three percent accommodation levy. I think that it already is a little less attractive to actually endeavor in this enterprise in our community. So I think the numbers yourselves will see decrease or level out versus grow. But by having a permit system in place where we know how many there is, we can look at growth trends up and down to see if there's something long-term that we should be more aggressive about. I don't think today is the day. I do myself, the one group that I would like to try to target with a, with a bylaw is what in the industry is called is, is a super host. So people that have, you know, eight to ten properties in a community and that's their professional job. I don't think that that's something that this community needs. So if we can implement a system where your first permit's as simple as fifty dollars with relatively an easy process. But again, the town's at no liability. Your second one obviously is investment property, so the fee can go up a little bit. And the third either be a very high permit or don't even allow it at all. You know, look at options like that. I think that would really limit the growth long-term for our community and not penalize the people that live in our town and want to come to our town. If we can do basic safety, I think that would be a great thing. Like, I don't think anyone could argue that a fire extinguisher is a bad thing to have. An exit plan, if you're just coming to a place to know where all the exits are in a house. Again, I think if you're arguing those, no disrespect to anyone, but you probably shouldn't be hosting people if you're not passionate about their safety. I grandfathered, I guess you answered my question about that. I, I think that there is some merit in some of the things, having parking. If your neighbor doesn't have a parking lot and they're parking at the end of your driveway for the entire, like every weekend, somebody else is parking there. That's an inconvenience for your neighbor. I think the rule about no large gatherings, I don't think people should have all-night parties with fifty people in their yard or a hundred and fifty people. I think that that, those bylaws are good. I saw councillor Gru's recommendation that it has to be rented for twenty-four hours. I've never heard the problem that that makes sense, so that way people aren't renting them out for shorter periods than that. The one that I haven't seen is, is no discrimination. I'm brought to my attention that there was an Airbnb or short-term rental or whatever it was that a couple showed up on motorcycles and they were refused the ability to stay there and the whole community was booked up. So like, have simple policies in place where we can say that, you know what, you're not an operator in the town of St Andrews if you're going to discriminate. I think those are good rules to have. And then as far as fines, I understand that a lot of people thought they're heavy-handed. But we also heard that some people are making thirty thousand dollars a season for their short-term rental. If your fee, if your fines a hundred and twenty-five dollars, you're going to laugh at that penalty because you're making thirty thousand dollars to do whatever you want. So there's got to be a little bit of, I guess you'd say teeth. If you're not willing to enforce a bylaw, you shouldn't pass a bylaw. And I know I'm, I'm rambling and I'm going on a lot of directions. And the last thing is, I don't think anyone should be able to rent a camper out at the campground. So I think there's a way we've got to encompass that. It's one thing if it's your own, but to rent that out, a seasonal campsite, that shouldn't happen. And then Salty Towers has been in our community for a hundred years. There's got to be a way that we can make sure that they can continue to operate for the next one hundred years.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Very much appreciated. Anyone else?
Your worship, councillor Gru. I would echo the deputy mayor's comments on, on, on all these issues. Thank you for your leadership on this. In terms of shortening up the bylaw, I do appreciate councillor Gru's four-page version. But I, I, I think we need to maybe go a step further and cut it down, have a one-page version of the bylaw, a one-pager. So everything's straightforward and everybody knows exactly what, what, what the rules are. So I, I, I put that out there as a challenge that we should be able to cut this down and have a one-page bylaw so that everybody knows what's going on and there's no, there's no surprises. I, I've been going around on Google a little bit, I see Portland, Maine, some other places have very straightforward, very short, short-term rental bylaws, which are easy to understand. And I think we should have the same here in St Andrews, a one-pager. Thank you, worship.
Thank you, councillor Gru. Further comments from council? Okay, it looks like we've done some work and we still have a little bit more to do.
One point of clarification, your worship?
Please, end.
Just one of the things that the deputy mayor mentioned. And given that we're going to talk about the zoning bylaw in a minute, I do want to just clarify. We actually wrote the zoning bylaw in such a way that that I can get into the evolution if people have questions of how we got here. But we don't actually have to change the zoning bylaw if, if council decides to wait on the short-term rental bylaw. I mean, all town bylaws are applicable regardless. But we, the way we wrote the clause about the short-term rental bylaws requiring a permit in the zoning bylaw is if there is a bylaw to regulate, then you need to get a permit. So if there isn't, then you don't need to get a permit and you can do the short-term rental in the zone that, assuming it's allowed in the zone as the type of use that's allowed. So just want to make that point, so it doesn't actually have to hold up the zoning bylaw. Originally, we had a lot more in the zoning bylaw about short-term rentals. And there, they had their own zones and would require rezoning. And I think it was way more convoluted than it needed to be. So we said, take that out, it, it's better to have a bylaw. And if somewhere along the lines, that sort of seemed like you have to have the bylaw for the zoning bylaw. I apologize for that miscommunication, but you don't, you don't have to.
Thank you, Mr. Gopin. That doesn't mean we don't need one or want one, it just means we don't have to have one. And it doesn't in any way invalidate our zoning bylaw.
No, you can go ahead and pass that and as soon as you get the short-term rental bylaw, then it's applicable.
Okay, good, good. All right. Any other comments at this point in time or do we move on to the next thing? There'll be a bit of time for the public and I know there's a great deal of interest in this. But this is not actually a public consultation, but there will be some time at the end of the meeting for questions from the public. And I'm sure a lot of them will be about this, but we need to get through the rest of the agenda. So I think we'll move forward. The next question, next thing on the agenda is BEB two zero zero five oh one, which is in fact the zoning bylaw. Mr. Gopin, were you intending to?
Yeah, thank you, worship. So no presentations. Really not a whole lot to talk about as far as I am concerned. We did have the public hearing last week before, or two weeks ago, I can't remember, before the short-term rental bylaw conversation. And really, there was, I think, one or two comments made that, that were probably a little bit more relevant to the short-term rental bylaw anyways. We have gotten some feedback from the public. There, there were lots of letters, not really more about the short-term rental bylaw than the zoning bylaw again. But they did point to a few very minor tweaks and definitions, just to clarify that, you know, a hotel has more than a certain number of rooms compared to a short-term rental, which it's kind of silent there. Picked up some typos. The most humorous one being that in the town of St Andrews, currently you cannot have a llama, the religious figure llama, not the animal llama. So we added an L, so the Dalai Lama wants to come to town, he can come, that's no problem. So yeah, there were no substantial changes, nothing that would require another public hearing. So at this point, staff is saying, you know, when you're ready to move to second and third reading, you can go ahead and do that. As that's, that's staff's opinion, so if council does have things they want to discuss or look at further, then we can certainly do that.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, is there anything for tonight that needs councillor Gru?
Thank you, your worship. One of the comments that was raised, and I believe was Ms. Carney that raised it. And, and I tend to agree with her. I have a hard time distinguishing between a short-term rental and a bed and breakfast. Other than serving a muffin in the morning, there really is no difference. And I think that the zoning bylaw is, is an opportunity for council to, to make a bed and breakfast a short-term rental. And to have a uniform standard applied to all short-term rentals, not have that distinction. Because we, we have a number of distinctions in, in the zoning bylaw that apply only to bed and breakfast. And I, I think it creates an unfair playing field whereby bed and breakfasts have to abide by one set of rules. Short-term rentals have a different set of rules and a different fee structure and permits and all sorts of penalties associated with that. And I think that zoning bylaw gives us an opportunity to treat all short-term rentals, including bed and breakfasts, the same way. Thank you.
And, and potentially tourist homes.
Tourist homes as well. And that, that gives us an opportunity to, to sort of figure out where does Salty Towers fit in? Well, it fits in with the other bed and breakfasts as a short-term rental.
Okay, thank you, councillor Gru. I think that's something for all of us on council to think about. Because, you know, that, that could be a bit of a game changer if we moved in that direction. And it may flow to the shortened need or I'm not going to say this and get people too encouraged. I'm not going to say elimination of the short-term rental bylaw, but it may shorten what we need to do and put more reliance on the zoning bylaw.
I still think we need the short-term rental bylaw to regulate the short-term rentals. But I think we need to have uniformity as to what is a short-term rental and make sure that the rules apply uniformly to everyone.
And the other thing, I guess I would comment and perhaps if someone else wants to comment on this. And, and I, I thought that Mr. Spear might comment on this in relation to the fire thing. It was somewhat of a shock to me to find out that the provincial government doesn't regulate any of those places. They stop if you've got less than, you've got less than ten rooms or twelve rooms. There are no rules and no one's enforcing them, but that really should be our responsibility as municipal council. And I think that, I hope what we're saying is that we are prepared to take that on and we should take that on because it's necessary. But not necessarily the way we had it, so. Yep, any other comment?
Your worship, if I could, I'm not going to get into the depth of the bylaw too much. But I'm going to say TikTok, TikTok, but this council's mandate is running out really fast. And so councillor Gru brought up some points, but this is the venue that you guys should really be beating this stuff around a little bit and trying to come up because we were hoping to go to second reading on March the first. And if we delay that again, then it's just, you're going to be right up against the gun before the municipal elections to get this done. So I think either, if you're not prepared to do it tonight, I think, Paul, next. Do we have a six o'clock opening next week where we could do another workshop on the zoning to try to do an amendment?
Chris, our six o'clock meeting next week on Monday is for active transportation trail. And then our seven o'clock's the committee meeting. If you want another meeting, it would have to be scheduled.
So I guess Counsel Gru, if you have, if that, if you have plans in place, we could talk about, about it tonight. It'd be nice to, you know, if you have specific concerns without dragging it out, but if you don't, that's council's prerogative to keep moving. I'm sorry, worship, I've cut off Counsel Harrison.
No, thank you. I think following up on what the CAO just said, and it's not that it's a bad idea from Counsel Gru, it's just that I think right now we need to strip down our current short-term rental bylaw to its bare necessities. Put that through. Next council can fix all of our mistakes. So let's just not make our mistakes too big. So let's just, you know, really have a very simplified STR. Let us not reopen zoning, although again, maybe that's how they fix our mistake. Counsel Gru is to go back and reload it like that. But I, I really think we need to, even if they aren't perfect, start, start, start finishing off these things. Thank you.
Worship, the, the, if I may, I guess in response to the CAO's comment, I think that the easy button here is I've got a draft of a short-term rental bylaw completed that was sent to all of council. That excludes already the, the, the bed and breakfast. If we revisit the zoning bylaw and just remove the, the the bed and breakfast from the zoning bylaw, that solves the entire issue. So it, it, it makes it a lot simpler and then we can proceed to second reading right from there. And, and that can be done within the timeframe we have available.
My fear would be though, is we haven't heard from the BMB people and wow, will we? When we all of a sudden we lump them from one category to another and we're just asking for trouble. Which the next council is fully, you know, they can do that all they want. I, I just say for now, let's just push it forward and whoever wants to run for the next council, I'm sure there's lots of people out there chomping at the bit. They can, they can work on this more.
Sounds like we should discuss this at the committee meeting again. And we're at a kind of a a watershed here. Anyone else want to comment tonight?
Your worship, you have Xander Gopin and Brad Henderson.
Okay. Yeah. Xander?
Sure. Thank you, your worship. So what the zoning bylaw says now about short-term rentals and BMVs, I think it's worthwhile just so council knows exactly what's, what's there. So short-term rentals pretty minimal in the zoning bylaws, allowed in certain zones, not in other ones.